Interrupt everyone, but it is seven o'clock on Tuesday, August 3rd. And I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. I have a very short invocation. Lord, may our country and may I seek your wisdom and discernment in everything we do. Roll call.
Trustee Matts.
Here.
McGurran.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Noonan.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zeiss.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, item two, review and approve minutes from regular board meeting of July 6, 2021.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, corrections, or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Welcome, Chief. Item three, comments from the floor. Opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. And thank you God, there is nobody here to talk sidewalks or anything right now. So we will move on to item four. Lakeview EMS update and service during Highway 35 project discussion only. I see John and Bridget are here, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us today. So we haven't been here to talk to you guys for a while, so I just wanted to make sure that, certainly answer any questions that might, that anyone might have. But things are going really well for us. I think things are going well in this area for us, I think, to date. So last year in 2020, we did 167 calls in the village. This year, so far, we've done 88 with an average response time between, I think, between seven and eight minutes for both years so far. So that's pretty good as far as what we had talked about in the beginning and what we kind of had planned and projected. As far as us for a service, we are getting busier and busier and really can't attribute that to anything other than just growing populations and just busy people and a lot of activity in these areas. So last year was a record-breaking year for us, and this year we're on pace to even break that record again. And due to that, we're actually going to add some ambulance coverage. So our busiest shift, 3:00 to 11:00 p.m., is where we deemed the biggest needs. So we're actually going to be adding a sixth ambulance into our whole operation. And that ambulance will go wherever needed. So it may be over here in Hudson area, maybe over in the Stillwater area, kind of depends on the day and depends on the volume. So it's exciting for us in that we're growing. We get to hire a few new people. This addition required us to add three more paramedics to our, three more full-time paramedics to our staff. So we're working through that hiring process now and kind of the logistics of adding that ambulance. We're also working on another pretty exciting project, which is building a new headquarters base over in our Stillwater area. Lakeview Hospital will be putting in a cath lab, and they need our, the current space that we're occupying there at the hospital for that project. So we are in the process of kind of specking out and designing a new building for us, which is obviously very exciting for us to have something new and grow a little bit again and have even more space for us to kind of do our business out of. That building will be next to the Curve Crest Clinic, so the Stillwater Medical Group Clinic.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to build it over here?
It would be. It's actually been, been talked about that. It would definitely be cheaper to build it over here. But, but yeah, so all good things, all exciting things. Things are going really well, our staffing levels. You know, we, we struggled with some open positions kind of in the heat of COVID in that nobody was really changing careers and people really weren't applying for jobs. And so we were short-staffed for a little bit, but our team pulled together well and were able to cover everything really pretty well. And now we're, we're back to hiring again, and we're getting some really excellent candidates. So, so things are good. And I know the kind of topic of conversation tonight was the construction projects going on and what's going to happen when the bridge closes. So conversations that, that we have been having since we first heard about this project and what we're going to do. And the first thing we did is we mapped out what, what would it look like if we responded to the North Hudson area from, from our Stillwater base. And based on speed, not distance, but our response times and I just, the first time I looked at it, I just kind of arbitrarily picked an address in North Hudson. I think I used the QuickTrip gas station as what would our response time be according to Google Maps from our Hudson base or our Stillwater base? And they were almost exactly the same to the minute. And though it was a longer distance in mileage, being mostly highway from Stillwater, we can get here a lot faster than we can when we have to kind of weave through town. And certainly in emergent situation, when, when we can use lights and sirens, we can really utilize that highway road space even better. Whereas if we're coming through town emergent, you know, we can really only go so fast for safety reasons. So we're still very confident that we can provide the same standard of care and the same response to this area even when the bridge is closed. The timing is actually pretty well in that we are adding this. Today was the first day of the, that we put on the additional ambulance during our peak hours. So that will be staffed during, whenever this project comes through, which will be helpful. So we'll have an extra truck. Probably during that time, we would post it over in the Stillwater location just to have that extra backup there so that, since we're going to be responding here from there, we'd have just that extra depth to pull from. So that's kind of all I had. John, did you have anything to add?
No, I think I'll hand this out. This was the information we presented at the Performance Review Committee last week. So I don't need to, I think Bridget covered everything good. So I'll just give each one of you a copy of this, and then you can look at it and certainly call us if you have any questions.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, if you got like our two slides or whatever there that you could send to Melissa and she could post them on the website or whatever.
I can do that too, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's been a year now, right?
It has been more than a year, yeah.
Any, any, any issues or improvements that you could see could potentially happen just over the timeframe of servicing us? I mean, communication's fine. I mean, just in general, just look at things. I mean, you obviously have studied things, you know, over the last year, year and a half.
Yeah. From a response and operational standpoint, I think things are going really well. We're continuing to work through our communication process with Singer County Dispatch. That was kind of a topic in the beginning, and they use a little bit, they use a different radio, they use VHF radios, and we use the 800 megahertz. And so that communication between them and our dispatch center is via phone call, which slows things down a little bit, but it has improved greatly since we started. And we have ongoing talks about how to make that better and, and the potential of integrating some CAD-to-CAD software that will actually push information automatically. There's, you know, everything comes with a cost, and so there's, there's weight to be considered there. But the relationship has been good, and anytime we do have an issue, we follow up on it immediately that day and, and figure out, you know, did something go wrong? Could something have gone better? But other than that piece, everything from, everything that we've seen has been going really well, so.
Consistency amongst the village, the city, to other surrounding communities as far as your service providing, I mean, the practices that we do, you know, as our end, are pretty consistent.
Yeah, yep, absolutely, yeah. And we meet with Chief here from time to time, anytime we have something to discuss or just feel like it's necessary to have a, have a conversation. And those conversations have been, been productive and, and good. So we appreciate the partnerships that we're building here, for sure.
Good.
We get, we get good feedback from our medics too about the police help on scene. So it's very helpful, and they're always there before we can get there.
Good.
And I even saw something on Facebook that gave kudos both to Lakeview and to our police department, saying what a wonderful professional job they do. And I've not heard a complaint about you guys since you've taken over, and that's, we really enjoy the partnership.
Good. Well, we're glad to hear it.
This CAD-to-CAD, are you already working on it, implementing, purchasing?
We are not yet. So I think the decision will have to be made at the county level to decide to make that purchase or not. So we obviously are in support of it and, and will support it any way that we, we can. But I think that's just a decision and a process that they would have to work through.
Where does it sit in the county?
Do you want to give an update on that?
Yeah.
Come on up. I mean, is there anything North Hudson can do to help push that along?
Well, there might be. My name's John Muller, the EMS Director for Lakeview. Like Bridget said, we're, we're just in the discussions right now. So originally, although we do things different, we, we adopted to the St. Croix County method of paging out the way they've always operated. So we complied with their recommendations that we do what they do. So we have pagers, our crews are notified by the pager, and we communicate on every call with the dispatch center, and that's been going very well. The delay that we talk about is that time from the 911 call to the time our dispatch center gets called. So we track all of our data is based off of times from our dispatch center, not from St. Croix County. And that's very important for the, for our day-to-day operations, that our dispatch center be notified what's going on, because that's how we can be so efficient and get backup coverage here when a truck goes on a call. We can move another truck into the area. But we can only do that when our dispatch center knows that someone's moving. So by us complying with the county, our trucks are moving before our dispatch center knows they're moving.
Okay.
So the CAD-to-CAD interface was something that we knew was coming down the pike. And eventually, the county would have the capability of utilizing that in their center. So up until now, their, their dispatch components were not capable of doing that. So in their new upgrades, we were told that they would be able to do that. So the latest now is that there is some expense that's going to come along with that. So I think when you ask the question, is there something the village could do, there may be. And those conversations haven't happened yet. But what the CAD-to-CAD interface does is the dispatch center here in St. Croix County would no longer have to pick up the phone and call our dispatch center. They literally just push a button, and it just transfers the whole call right into our dispatch center. And it, it pops up just like a 911 call, so they, it's treated just like a 911 call, and, and then the process is seamless.
Would seem a lot more efficient.
It would be.
Who at the county would be holding the purse strings on that decision?
Well, I don't know. Terry Anderson is the, is the Director of the Communications Center. And I know that Terry has been working with our dispatch center for quite a while on that. So I don't think there's any opposition as far as I'm aware of, of anyone doing this. It's, it's that cost piece that, we don't know the full price, I've heard, but that's where we're at. So the City of Hudson, I think, wants to pursue it some more, and there were some recommendations that we, not we, but they want to involve the other communities. So that's where that is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Unless you're bored to tears, you're welcome to get whatever you got going on tonight and done, because this could be. Okay. Item five, appointment of Mary McGurran to fill vacant position on the cable board. Approval requested. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Any discussion? Well, I would like to say, Mary, thank you for volunteering and stepping up for, for that position. It's, I served on that for many years, and then Brian gracefully took over, and, and you'll be a welcome member there, I'm sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor of the appointment of Mary to the cable board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item six, Resolution 2021-12, requesting exemption from county library tax. Approval requested.
Move to approve, unless you need me to read all the whereas's. Okay, move to approve 2021-12.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion?
I would just like some clarification. As I read it, it sounds somewhat like a formality that is completely unrelated to the joint, the funding of the joint library. Is that correct?
This gets, yeah, it has nothing to do with that right now, but otherwise, we could get taxed on, on both sides if we don't ask for these actions.
Right. That's what I mean by, because of our current arrangement, we don't need to be concerned about that. And like you said, if we did both, we'd be double dip, we'd be paying twice.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted verification of that.
So we do this each year. It's to be exempt, because we're part of a joint library, we can be exempt from that county tax. We just have to at least contribute the three-year average.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
It doesn't mean that necessarily a number goes in the budget. That's just what we, the minimum we have to do.
Great. Just wanted confirmation of that. Thank you.
Yep, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution 2021-12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Very good. Item seven, temporary class parent B slash parent class B alcohol license for North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc., August 19 through the 22nd, 2021. Approval requested.
Stan, move to approve the temporary class B fermented malt beverages and class B wine license for North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc., with an effective date of August 19 through August 22nd, 2021.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there discussion?
What was the first year of Pepperfest?
Why don't you go to our website and find out?
Okay.
I think it actually says on the application.
1954.
Yeah, 1954. There was a few years off there, I guess.
That was a very good year. So that was before Chief's time?
Oh, not funny.
I have a question. Does this, does this usually come from public safety? Is there a recommendation? So is there, did the public safety make a recommendation to the board?
Well, it doesn't come directly, no, I'm sorry, directly. We submit our, of course, all of our license from he reviews, so I wouldn't say, it didn't come through our, our committee, no. I apologize. Well, all of our activity that we submit go through him, though.
So the chief supports the... Thank you. For the record.
He performs all the background checks and every, all the background checks and the applications have to go through him, so.
That's true of all liquor licenses, right?
For the operator licenses, yes. And then the, for the bars and restaurants, yes.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of granting the temporary class B license for the Pepperfest so we can commence on the 19th through the 22nd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. So that carries item eight. Adoption of Ordinance 04-2021, amending Chapter 98, zoning Article 4, supplementary district regulations, Section 98-103, fences approval requested. Is there a motion?
Stan, can I move to amend Ordinance Number 04-2021?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Well, everyone down here is.
Mary. So this is just for us to try to get rid of the buckthorn. We got the fencing in. Hopefully sometime next week, we're going to try a small area, you know, see if we can start taking buckthorn out of our parks and everything.
I've seen where it's been very successful in a lot of places, and then this just sets up so that we can, because we didn't allow barbed wire and/or electric, and this allows the board to approve any use of those particular fencings, so.
I think it's great. I've seen it in a couple of places in the Hudson area, and it's amazing how fast they can clean it out.
Yep. Shepherds sending in bodies to do that, so that's, I like it. Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 04-2021, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item nine, installation of temporary fencing for use of goats to help with buckthorn invasive weed control. Discussion approval request?
Stan, can I move to approve Public Works to install electric fence at Woodcrest Park and possibly St. Croix Station Park if time allows?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Amy, any further discussion? How much time does it take to set fence? Do you know, Patrick? Any idea?
It should be real time consuming. It looks like it goes up pretty quick.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I'm looking forward to it. It should be.
I don't do any stretching or anything. I'm used to it.
Ah, like with barbed wire or something like that. Okay, all in favor of the motion to allow the fencing to be installed so we can get our goats in, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item 10, new business from the board or staff. President's comments. I just got a couple of quick things. As most everyone is aware, that is on the alert system and has been paying attention to Sixth Street Project. We've got concrete supposed, they were, right now, I think it's blocked off so that as they're running string, in order to be able to run concrete by Friday. And during that time, there will be 0.0 residential traffic through that section so we don't mess up the perfectly good new road bed. And I just want to make sure, I know that people are, you know, that's going to be inconvenient, but it's, when that road gets done, I think everybody would be happy with that. So please stay out of that area for 10 days to two weeks, whatever it takes, before they'll give us the clearance to use that. Next thing I'd like to bring up, is I don't know how many people saw it or heard, but, but the library has a, what's called Voices in the Valley. And this particular, the latest one that they had featured our Chief Richard and Chief Willem's from down in Hudson. And I, I encourage everyone to watch it. It's ver, it was very, very eye-opening. You guys did a fantastic job, absolutely fantastic job for people to be able to understand the problems and issues that, oh, it's just North Hudson, or it's just Hudson type of thing, that, hey, they face the same stuff with everybody. So I really hope everyone will take a chance. Melissa, I think we could put that on the website, the link to that.
Sure.
It's on YouTube right now. And, and I don't know, the first part I watched, there was no sound for like, I don't know, it was like, it's almost 20 minutes, you know? But, but they got that fixed, and yeah, you guys did a great job. I, kudos to the library for having that and for having you guys there. I mean, I thought it was really, really well done. I'm sorry I missed it on my calendar, or I'd have been there in support of you guys, for sure. And the last thing, as everyone is also aware in the village, if you paid any attention, we've got Pepper Festival coming up in a couple of weeks, as I said earlier, from the 19th to the 22nd. And I would like to ask everyone with, with all the construction and everything that we're going to be having, still have going on, there's going to be detours, there's parking, you know, issues, so please, I want everyone, please be careful and, you know, have, have fun, you know? It's, I know a lot of people are pretty excited that we're back to having Pepper Festival this year. And it, and with Tim and those guys, the Pepper Festival Committee has done a really great job of getting stuff set up to, so that it will be a fun, you know, you know, memorable event. And please also be safe out there. Melissa?
The only thing I have is to kind of piggyback off of Stan's comment regarding the paving of Segment 4. Just a reminder that the cutting will start immediately after the paving is done, and that is the part that can go late into the night depending on the weather conditions. So I did add that to the website and in the alert. But just a reminder that the cutting will be done immediately after the paving.
Thank you. All right, let's see, next would be Plan Commission. Paul, you, I guess you tapped for the updating this month.
We had two items of Plan Commission. One was the ordinance for the fencing, which we already handled here. The other was a concept review for some commercial development on the north end of town in the corner of 35 and Cratley, behind where I think he's, the dentist office is there. Would like to put in three more units, essentially, similarly has there directly north of his existing building. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, setbacks and zoning requirements and whether to do a PUD or whatever, a condo plat. And it was just a concept, so there was a lot of input from the Plan Commission. I think it was well taken by the applicant. They were going to go back and do some more drawings and essentially come back with some more ideas and what they thought would be the best options there. One of the issues was, you know, the ordinance requires that the lots went on a public road, and these would not. They would be back at the lots behind the existing buildings. So that's one of the things that they're going to have to overcome. You know, they essentially wanted to just, you know, do a loop road, which may be fine, but it doesn't comply with the ordinance.
So is it to the north of their existing building?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that that wooded area? I'm not real familiar, so I drove by and see, all kind of wooded, just north of the existing building?
Yeah, there's, there's some woods in there. And there would be, be three buildings, or be four buildings in a row. Two more.
I think it's three plus the existing.
Three, and then one on the side.
So three going to the north?
Yep.
And then one on the east?
One on the side.
East or west?
Towards, towards 35, to the west.
Okay.
Yeah, one, one north and south.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for? Okay, hold on there. Item 12, Personnel and Finance Committee Recommendations. Claims and approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the August 3rd, 2021 non-recurring claims of $130,358.87?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Is there comments or questions?
What's the $100,000 coming from?
That has to do with our first payment to the state for the Highway 35 project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. This is spending, so roll call vote. Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you. Item B, Amendment of 2021 Budget to Record Bond Proceeds Related to the Highway 35 and Wisconsin Street North Project and the Refinancing of Loans. Approval requested.
Stan, I move to amend the Village of North Hudson's 2021 annual budget to record bond proceeds related to the Highway 35 and Wisconsin Street North Projects and for the financing of existing debt.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there comments or questions?
Melissa, do you kind of want to explain what this is?
So we received the bond, that you're well aware that the board approved the bond for those projects and the refinancing of existing debt. Received the, the closing was on July 27th, and then the proceeds were wired to the village that same day, I believe they were, that same day. So now that we have that, we need to basically record it, and that requires us to amend the budget to get the money into the correct accounts. So, and all these account numbers, this all comes from our auditor, basically telling us where we got to put the money in and where it's coming out of to, to pay. So that's what those entries are.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, and this is, let's see, this is really not spending, it's just all in favor of the, or do you need a roll call?
To amend the budget?
Yeah, I would do a roll call.
Okay, let's start the other end, Tim.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, item C, Possible Options for ARPA Funds. Discussion only. Well, as everyone pretty much knows, that the... Well, as everyone pretty much knows, that, uh, the, uh, money that were being allotted for this is, uh, got lots of different, uh, criteria that, of what you can and cannot use it for. And even the stuff that you can use it for, you have to make sure your i's are dotted and your t's are crossed. So, uh, this is a temporary li- or I mean, a partial list, what Melissa put together. Uh, we, you know, are still open, you know, like I said earlier in the finance meeting, uh, we've got, uh, we don't have to spend this by the end of the year or anything like that. It's just, uh, you know, we, and we wanna make sure that, uh, as we're doing this, that if we would, uh, use it for one thing, if we don't, if they don't approve that or whatever, we'd be on the hook to pay it back, I believe is correct. Uh, Melissa, you got anything to add to this?
Um, no, like I, like Stan said, it's just kind of a starting list for discussion purposes. Um, finance gave a couple other ideas that I'll look into, one of them sidewalks. Um, and then there was something else that we'll get some more pricing on, release some rough estimate.
Retaining wall.
Yep, the retaining wall. Um, when it comes to have, using it for outdoor, um, things like the parks or anything, it, I believe it has to fall within a qualified census tract, which puts more limitations on it. What that means exactly, I don't know. I don't, Paul, I have it in my, my, uh, all my documents, but, um, I believe, does that have to do with like a low-income area? So then I don't know if we're gonna be able to use it for parks or sidewalks. So it, that's what, exactly what Stan said. They say you can have this money, but then there's all these other limitations in how you can use it. But if, you know, this is just a starting list at the top. You can see how much money we'll get total. We only have half of that amount right now. Um, there's two hundred and fifty thousand of that kinda earmarked for the Wisconsin Street North project. We didn't include the water and sewer portion in the bond for that reason. But it leaves about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to be used for other things. So, and if people have ideas, they want me to look into, you can email them to me and I'll look into them for the next board meeting. Um, we can just kind of keep it on there if you wish for ideas to, to talk about.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, it's, you know, we've got, like, time to spend it and, you know, people, you know, I mean, you know, residents or whatever, have something, you have them contact one, you know, any of the trustees. We're all listed on the, you know, our phones and emails and stuff to, you know, say, hey, what about this, you know? And, and then we'll bring it up, you know, give it, put it on the list. And, uh, you know, there's, they're, they're called wish lists for a reason, I guess, you know? I mean, uh, but everybody thinks, oh, that's free money. Well, it comes with attachments.
And, and I put a little note on the bottom of the second page. It's just, it's important to remember that the federal, state, county, local levels are all getting quite a bit of funding. Um, so a lot of the programs, business loans, grants, all of that is coming from the higher up levels, which I think is more appropriate. There's a lot more paperwork, uh, and proof that's required with a lot of that stuff. So it's not as appropriate with the local level. Um, you know, and a few sources will say it's great if you can just kind of keep the money, 'cause the local governments aren't getting as much as, you know, the state and federal levels. To keep it for projects within the village, you know, really use it. Um, when you start giving it away is when there's a lot of other stipulations to it.
Couple of questions. Melissa, we, when does this need to be spent by?
Uh, it's December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
And if there's a project in the works, I believe if there's a project in the works, it has to be completed by two thousand and twenty-six.
Oh, so you can, so you can just encumber it by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four?
Start a water sewer project, you know, something like that. Um, and it's not gonna be done till two thousand and twenty-five or two thousand and twenty-six, then that extends that part of it. But you have to have it started before that date.
The, um, smart TV and the laptop, does that, would that then allow interaction at the meetings with the citizens? Or is it just for projection out?
It would just be for, well, the idea is that if we have to go back to Zoom.
Right.
So it would allow people to be in person, uh, whoever wanted to be here in person for board members. And then the Zoom would be projected onto the TV. We tried to do it with the all device onto the
Right.
projection screen through there. And that's when we ran into problems, right, Brian?
Yep.
Um, so this, the idea is it could go to the, a new TV. That TV is pretty old. Um, but you would need a new laptop, because the laptop we have is even older, um, to be able to allow for that.
And so would that also allow citizen, uh, not just monitoring, but like, interaction with citizens? Or is it just for...
Well, that's only, it would only be like it usually is during a board meeting.
Right, yep.
You know, during the public comment section.
Yeah, perfect.
Right.
And do you know what the, um, idea is for the Hudson Fire Department? Like what they're, what they're requesting for the...
Stan probably can highlight.
Yeah, I was at, uh, you know, we have quarterly meetings down there and, uh, and the chief, uh, due to like COVID and the contaminated, uh, you know, different, you know, things they respond to, it, everybody, every firefighter has to have, uh, turnout gear. They've got, you know, that's your helmet, you know, all your personal protective equipment. And what's hap- happening is sometimes you get them stacked up, well, they've only got one set of gear. And if that gear is in, uh, being cleaned, and it takes, you know, it takes a good eight hours, I guess, per, you know, to get them, you know, cleaned and dried and everything like that. So, you know, if one of the firefighters that responds, if his gear's still, you know, uh, you know, being cleaned, he can't respond to the fire. So they're, they're trying to get, you know, enough for, for, uh, a second set so that they can, you know, for better response times and, and for the, uh, the group. I mean, he said he's gonna put it on their, that he's gonna put that in the request for their budget for twenty, you know, for next year. And so this, I thought, this would be a great way to use it that it, you know, 'cause otherwise, you know, it's gonna be divided up between the four, uh, uh, partners. And, uh, and one way or the other, we're gonna be on the hook.
Thank you. And so, um, I think you had said, uh, that anyone could get in touch with a board member if they had ideas. Or Melissa, I assume also they could email you at the village board with ideas?
They can, yep.
So these, these won't go through committee? These will come, or will they go to the finance committee? Like, what's the step for the decision-making process? Okay.
Yeah. Um, 'cause I think finance and then board should all discuss them.
Right.
Got it.
But like I said, if a committee has an idea or something, they can certainly bring it forward to finance and the board.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Melissa, I'm also wondering, excuse me, if you have easy access to or can tell us where there is a real concise listing of the criteria or limitations so that when, so we know, we don't bother to bring something forward that isn't appropriate and/or when residents ask us, we can be able to speak about that a little bit?
Um, unfortunately, there's not a real clear listing. There is on the website after that handout that says possible options. There's a s- another handout, a colored one, two-page from the U.S. Department of Treasury that lists the, uh, categories. That's probably the easiest one. However, you can see it's pretty broad and doesn't drill into these real, um, specific uses.
Okay.
So a lot of this is communities sharing their ideas of what they're gonna use it for. I mean, some of these ideas I have, you know, were some from other municipalities or things that I've heard are needed in the village or, or things like that. Um, so that's about the best thing, because the handouts from the treasury are, I mean, my file is this thick. And it's just, there's nothing clear that says you can use it for this, this, and this. Unfortunately, there's not.
Which is still thinking on my part, that there would be a clear, concise.
And that's why it's, I literally all day have been going through this handout, and then I went through another handout and another handout, just trying to see, you know, get ideas from it. It's so broad that they just want you to kind of take this category, have an idea. But then there is gonna have to do, be some research done with each idea to see if we can do it.
Right.
If it qualifies or not. Like the thing to the fire department, I don't think we can give the money right to the fire department through this. I think it has to go through another source. So that's something that we'll have to look into.
And Melissa, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is offering some sort of technical assistance too. I know I saw they had something on their website, I believe.
I have resources from, um, the league. And then the treasury has a big handout that they have out on their website. Um, and Ellers, our financial consultant, um, some of that came from them as well. But they all kind of say it's good to keep the money within the village, you know, as much as possible. Um, like I said, there's other programs at the higher levels of government that are doing these other grants and things like that where they can come from. So, but yeah, it's not as cut and dry. There's ideas here, but that doesn't mean that they all are able to be done.
Thank you for including the treasury's, um, layout there. That is actually pretty, pretty nice.
Yeah, it was the easiest one I could find, to give some ideas, so.
Yeah, that's a nice resource.
Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, we'll go on to item thirteen, the Public Works Committee Recommendations. Chair update. Brian?
Stan, we did meet, and we have two items to bring forward. Um, purchase of, uh, a brush cutting attachment for our skid steer. So the motion is to approve the purchase of brush cat attachment from Tri-State Bobcat. Cost not to exceed fifty-two hundred. Funding to come from Public Works capital equipment account.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Uh, discussion?
PJ, what are you gonna use this for?
Cut brush.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Galahad, Station Lane, Station Circle, um, Kratley, wherever, you know, gets real thick. Um, we do have a, a walk line, one that's, what, five years old now or something. Um, works great. Not, um, not a problem with it. The only downfall to that one is when we, uh, walk over the top of a ground bees nest, it usually we tip off. This will help with that, you know, sitting in a cab and, and less chance of something flying and hitting your knee or something, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the... Hearing none. That's a purchase. Mary?
Aye, yes.
Amy?
Yes.
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 Yes. And yes.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, C.
Okay, I move to approve the purchase of a grapple bucket from Tri-State Bobcat and cost not to exceed twenty-nine hundred. Funding to come from Public Works capital equipment account. Patrick, you wanna explain a grapple bucket?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Kirk. Okay, now, I guess, Patrick.
So the grapple bucket is another attachment. Um, what that does is it's, uh, hydraulic, hydraulic operated. Um, so you have your bucket, and then if you're trying to pick up trees, brush, licks, whatever, the top of it causes down. So you can pick it up or pick it up safer, dump it into the truck. And I'm also gonna try to use it on the beach. I don't know if it's gonna work, but I'm gonna try.
Very good. Is there, uh, any other questions? Hearing none. Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item fourteen, public safety. Tim?
Stan, we did meet, but we have nothing to carry forward tonight.
Thank you. How about public welfare, Kirk?
Nothing to move forward.
Okay, and park board?
Same thing.
Okay. And that brings us to number seventeen. Uh, board may convene into closed session pursuant to statute nineteen point eight-five, pair and one.
That, I don't see it on the agenda. I mean, I see it in our packet, but I don't see it on the agenda. I don't know what it is.
What did?
There is one other item on our board packet that it's, uh, it's, uh, Boomster and Sons Excavating.
Oh, uh, well, then I guess you would have brought that up to Public Works or whatever.
Did we, did we cover this in Public Works?
I would've thought so.
We did talk about it.
Look, all right, could you at least explain it briefly?
All I did was went and got a quote, and I wanted you guys in the public to see it, um, that if we were to get another contractor to install twenty-four feet of, uh, schedule forty-four inch sewer pipe, eight feet deep, this is, that's what it would cost.
Okay, that, that goes back to the public hearing thing where people were wondering about the cost of the pipe or that, you know, someone said the PVC pipe is not that expensive. And to actually have somebody bury it eight feet deep and purchase it, he's saying is twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars.
It's bid for the construction of the, gotcha.
Yeah, that was from a, a citizen's complaint.
Yes.
Point of information.
Another bid because, uh, yeah.
For those listening, that's from our last board meeting, and someone, a citizen, brought that up in case anyone's listening, correct? That's how I remember it.
Yes.
Okay, so this is an actual estimate showing what it would actually cost?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so, and the average cost was twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred, so.
That adds clarity.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Okay. Now can we go to seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, seventeen is the board may convene into closed session pursuant to nineteen point eight-five, pair and one, pair and lowercase e, to deliberate and/or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to water and sewer ad hoc committee updates. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Stan, I motion to go to closed session.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.